We used to have a hundred dollar budget that I didn't know about until we were giving it away. We voted to get rid of it because like, I mean, it was like a hundred dollars. I think it was a hundred dollars. I think it was a hundred dollars. But we got rid of it and I'm like, I didn't even realize we got it or I would have bought myself. Oh my God. It's been a long time. Right? Right? Okay. Or maybe not. We're gonna have to figure it out. 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 You know what I'm saying? We're gonna have to figure it out. 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 We are. Yes, we are. Yes, we are. Well, and see, we had a church scene. We used to have a hundred dollar budget that I didn't know about until we were giving it away. We voted to get rid of it because like, I mean, it was like a hundred dollars. A hundred dollars once or a hundred dollars. I think it was the EDA. It was a hundred dollars. But like, we got rid of it and I'm like, I didn't even realize we got it or I would have bought myself. I'm like, oh. Well, yeah, because he actually. I never loved him, but I still like him. I love him. I love him. I love him. I love him. Oh, all right. I'm a little, uh, out of it today. I just got my experience. I have one on my. And where are you? Oh, my God. Four with us last night. It was horrible. Six foot four, five. Oh, my God. No, the six foot six, six foot three. Oh, my God. Jack, you got it. That was horrible. There. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Jack, you got it. That was horrible. There. What's this? How's that for a year? Ryan, it's been there since as long as I've been here. This is what it is. Yeah. Yeah. Come on. That's hilarious. I've spent my years. Ryan, it's been there since as long as I've been here. It's been here. This is what it is. It's what it is. Yeah. Yeah. What's this? How's that for a year? Ryan, it's been there since as long as I've been here. It's been here. This is what it is. It's what it is. Yeah. 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 Come on. That's hilarious. 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 We heard it was something. Why? 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 I have never had a meeting that I want to talk to people. I just feel, uh, I'm like. I go down there. I'm like, wow. I think. 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 I don't care. I don't care. I don't have any experience. The life goes on. But I don't have any experience. The life, I, uh, I don't know this. You have a work. You have a job. 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 I'm like, I'm waiting to talk to myself all night time. I'm like, I'm tired. I'm tired. I'm so 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 tired. Yeah. I'm so bad for being. I'm trying to forget. 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 Except most of the things we do. There used to be a remote if we actually want to. It's a lot. 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 It's a bit. It gets old. It's all about. It's a bit. 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 We just to the clerk of the United States of America and to repelling for which is. The nation under God. The liberty and justice for all.
Who is going to be our acting clerk this evening?
What does that mean? What do you have to do?
In absence of our clerk to do roll call votes, take roll call.
Can't do it.
If you need me to, just let me know.
I'm not functioning well.
We need a motion.
It'd be nice to.
I would move to ask Kim to take over as clerk.
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
Pretty please.
All in favor of making Kim the acting clerk this evening?
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes unanimously unanimously. Kim, thanks for being willing to do extra duties tonight.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you very much.
And with that, would you please take a roll call of the board?
Sure. Trustee Houck.
Present.
Clerk Cody is, um, excused. Thank you. Supervisor. Milky?
Here, Union Township, Isabella County, State of Michigan. Just have it.
I was gonna say, you don't have to say that.
Delay of game.
Treasurer Rice here. Trustee Thering.
Here.
Trustee Bills.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
All right. Everybody is here except Clerk Cody, who's excused.
All right, we have an agenda with two new business items, consent agenda, et cetera, et cetera. Happy to entertain any motions.
I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by Houck, support by Brown. Any discussion? See none. All in favor to approve the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion to approve the agenda passes unanimously. We have no presentations tonight, uh, no public hearings. That takes us to item seven on our agenda, public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to speak to the board and/or public, please state your name and address for the record and we'll open up public comment at 7:02 PM. Count it to ten. Seeing no public here this evening. We'll close public comment at 7:00. Oh, clock changed. 7:03 PM. Uh, no closed session being proposed this evening. That brings us to item nine on our agenda, report boards' comments. Again, with our list of boards and commissions, um, we have a few spots open. ZBAA, uh, we'll have one during the winter on the planning commission. Are there any others that people want to lift up? Just a reminder to continue to hit the pavement. Talk to your neighbors. If there are no objections, I'll move us to item nine B, board member reports. Let's start with Trustee Brown.
Yes, regular meeting for Mount Pleasant City Commission, Monday, November 8, Zoom meeting. It was a pretty quick meeting, actually, but there was 10 items, roughly 11 items on the agenda, excuse me. And I just wanted to speak of one of them, pretty standard 2022 annual budget, things, operating budget, things like that they went through. But they did pass the contract with the recovery, independent safety and empowerment rise program. I, um, Avisy Incorporated with the mental health service assistance. I've talked about this, and I believe in the last meeting, uh, they're going to bring in some support for the mental health assistance and Mr. Loria is heavily involved in this, of course. And it did pass. Happy to see that. I'm, uh, I'm, I'm very curious to see how this works for them. So, that's all.
So, that was final passage of that. It's done deal.
Yep. They're moving into it now. Yeah. So, then they had a work discussion on their operating budget.
I hope they have success with that program.
I do, too. I'm, I'm very curious to see. I'm going to actually talk to Sheriff Mayne about it, too. And I'm sure he's got an eye on it, but, yeah, it's, I think it's, it's needed.
Very good.
Thank you.
Trustee Bills?
Tomorrow's Veterans Day. Thank you for all your service, everybody that serves in any position. I attended one meeting of the Isabella County Board of Commissioners on the second and nothing really happened. So, that's all I've got.
Can I add to that? I did go to the work session that day.
Oh, well, they did. Yeah, that's right. Well, they, well, they approved the, the EDA stuff.
Yep. So, that's, that's a done deal for the township, both on our side, the agreement.
Yes.
Right.
And I do want to add, um, I did attend the entire work session. So afterwards, I had county commissioners and the, and they thought it was very fair. Um, and they thought it was a good faith way to work together. So, I mean, we received a lot of positive feedback from that and I'm really, one, proud of that and pleased that they, they understood what our objectives were, too, which was to play nice in the sandbox with the county, right?
I'm glad we did it that way, too. Really glad.
Trustee Thering?
Uh, the planning commission has not met since our last meeting, so we meet next week. Two weeks, I'll have something, something.
Okay. Clerk Rice? Wait, Treasurer Rice?
Both tonight, evidently, right? Um, so, I already gave the sidewalks one at the last meeting. We haven't had a meeting since. Um, but, um, I did want to say taxes are in process again. Um, and we'll be at the post office on the 30th, um, so that hopefully they're in people's mailboxes first, starting the first, when they can start to be paid. So, um, yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Trustee Houck?
Want to road commission meeting on the 28th. There's another one tomorrow morning. Uh, yeah, tomorrow morning. Um, they're looking at getting a different health insurance provider because they're projecting a 13% increase in healthcare costs. There's 1,100 tons of salt on order that should be coming in within the next week or two, they said. They're paving, or they're wrapping up paving of the roads for the season. Um, the asphalt plant closes down, but they may open back up for another week to do a few little jobs. They're getting trucks ready for the winter. They're, they're even having a problem getting employees. They've got two or three openings for drivers and then they're looking to hire on a heavy, a heavy mechanic, heavy duty mechanic. They haven't been able to find one. They've interviewed and it's just ridiculous. Um, and then they're continuing work on Mission Road from roundabout to roundabout for next year. That's going to be a good project.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, I didn't have anything to add other than what we already talked about regarding the county commission. Uh, EDA will not have a quorum November 16th. Wonder why? Um, so we've, we've postponed the meeting to, I believe it was the 30th or towards the end of the month. Yeah, 30th. But everybody was upfront in the previous EDA meeting that they might be absent that day. Good luck to all the hunters out there. Uh, with that, that takes us to item 10, consent agenda. I, I will note, um, there are three items, GH and I, which you, you could make the argument in the past, we may have had on our agenda, but our policy governance says that we, just as a reminder, that we'll try to put as much in consent agenda as possible to allow us additional time for more important things. Not that those are important, but things that need our discussion, maybe is a better way to put it. Um, so I always want to highlight those and, um, this board obviously has the, um, the right at any time to pull any of those items out if they want to have discussion on an item, so. But otherwise, I think you'll continue to see these kinds of things in the consent agenda.
I move to support, to approve the consent agenda.
I support.
Motion by Bills, support by Brown, um, to support the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to new business item A, second reading and adoption of PT XT 2101, the zoning ordinance amendments. We did have a chance in a previous meeting to review this text amendment being proposed. We had our first reading, um, and that brings us to now. Do you have anything you'd like to add, manager?
I do not. Thank you.
Uh, with that, I'd be happy to entertain any motions regarding PT XT 2101.
I'll make a motion to conduct a second reading of the proposed PT XT 2101 zoning ordinance amendments and adapt the, and adapt the amendatory ordinance as the township ordinance number 2106.
Support.
Motion by Houck, support by Brown, to conduct second reading and adoption of PT XT 2101. Uh, discussion?
Covers the last stuff.
Does.
It's good. We need it, you know what I mean? I think it's going to make a couple of jobs around here a lot easier.
Um, I do have a request of Trustee Thering, if you'd take back at least my gratitude. I'm assuming the gratitude of the board for the work done by the planning commission and, and staff I'm assuming the gratitude of the board, for the work done by the planning commission and staff in this. I was excited when we got this new zoning ordinance, and it needed some, just a few touch-ups, which we expected.
Done.
Appreciate the good work. Any other discussion? See none, all in favor of conducting the second reading and adoption of PTXT 2101 zoning ordinance amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion to pass the second, have a second reading and adopt PTXT 2101 passes unanimously. That brings us to probably our bigger item on the agenda tonight as far as time. Discussion of the fiscal year 2022 budget recommendation. You've been given your binder, we've had a summary presented by our manager, and this allows us to have some formal slash informal discussion, questions, et cetera, with manager and staff helping explain why they recommended what they did. Do you have anything to introduce on this?
Not to introduce, just like you said, an opportunity for questions, clarification by the board members to help you better understand the budget, thank you.
I will ask the board, I thought about this some, a couple ways we could do this. We just kind of, as questions arise, we'll take them. We could also do kind of round robin, where we start, say with trustee Brown, and just go around the table with the questions that you have. You have, anybody have a preference?
Just as they come.
The roundtable thing?
Just going around?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good right now.
Well, how about we start on trustee Houx's side then?
Does everybody have this?
Yeah.
What is it?
It's the one that Mark's on his.
Kind of the overview.
Oh.
I said some things I wrote down while I was sitting in my beer blank. Yeah, we're deer, so I was reading. Okay, at page one of this mark, you have it right. The summary that you gave us.
The memo?
Fiscal year 2022 budget recommendation.
Just, yeah. Just a couple things, where it talks about water hookups, it says larger taps, larger tap slash meters will be done, time and material. What would the hourly rate be on that? Should we post what the hourly rate would be?
And that's in your, is that in the fee schedule?
Yeah, I think, well, I thought, I'm going to say $96 an hour or something. The first section, isn't it?
Yeah, 98 per hour, it says.
Yeah, okay.
I never looked at that.
Good memory.
That's my fault, I'm sorry, that's my fault, I never looked in here. But it just said on that summary when we got it that.
So when we talk about a larger tap, we're talking about anything above a two inch tap. The township is able to complete up to a two inch gap on their own. Occasionally, we do smaller ones, we even have to hire a contractor if it's a large bore. Or this, for instance, like Remus Road, we normally hire somebody who has a larger board, we can do the board machine. But generally, we're talking about a tap that is larger than two inch. We contract those out, so we charge back to the developer or the property owner. It's usually a developer, because those are normally needed for commercial taps. Fire suppression, either fire suppression, the addition of a fire hydrant. Most projects now, the fire department's requiring them to put a fire hydrant on site, so they have to take an eight inch line in. So those are done by a contractor. We get pricing for the material, the township buys the material. We pass that price on to the developer, we don't upcharge it, and then we get a price for whatever the work is going to be, the live tap, and if there's a bore involved, if there's a fire hydrant installation involved, whatever that work is, we pass that on to the developer, we don't upcharge it. We do do some of our own cleanups on those, and then I normally figure out how many hours it will take to do that, how many guys it takes to do that, and we usually have a small fee for that. If there is a charge for inspection, they're charged that based on, they put an escrow in, and that's based on our inspection rate that's in our fee schedule. So that's how those are calculated as far as water taps.
Okay.
So we pass those on, we don't, we don't make money on those, those are just cost.
Similar to the one that had to be done, like Renaissance Academy had to put that hydrant in the back, or that.
Dollar General just had to have a hydrant put on quicker.
Yeah, okay.
Most commercial property projects, the fire department requires a hydrant, at least one.
Yeah.
Sometimes two, very seldom anymore that we have when they don't require a hydrant. And they can, it can be for domestic and fire suppression, because normally they'll do a larger tap, then they'll branch it off once they get onto their property, and their fire suppression's part of it, and then their domestic is part of it. It just depends on the project and what they're doing.
As far as sidewalks go, it says that we're, in the general fund, we're going to budget $300,000 for sidewalks, various sidewalk projects. Now, some of that's holdover money from 2021, right?
Yep.
Because we were going to do this out here, and it didn't get done.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Down on Lincoln Road down here, if that project gets done this year, we have $167,000 budgeted. This is the project that goes from the bridge south to Broomfield Road, and that extends both ways. We have $167,000 budgeted for that. I believe that project was in 2017 when that got approved. Should we increase that amount?
And the EDA is doing some, too, right, or the D?
Yeah, $330,000, so we have basically $500,000, half a million.
I'm just wondering if we should increase some of that, because, I don't know, I mean, it's, prices have definitely increased.
Oh, yeah, definitely, doubled.
I know that money's been, right, that money, go ahead.
There's $167,000 budgeted in the general fund for that project, $330,000 budgeted in West EDA for that project. We have not received any requests formally or informally to change those amounts.
Okay.
Can I jump in on this one?
Yes.
So this is the one that I actually took the most notes on, I had, I struggle with the most. And we essentially have had a half a million dollars not doing anything for our residents for years, and it keeps getting passed along. And I guess I want to better understand what the actual plan is, and I need to be able to articulate to my neighbors that this is a half million dollars well spent, or is it? I don't know, I mean, this was done when I wasn't here, so I don't understand the plan. You know, I live over in that area, and I see the traffic, and I don't understand why there was a light decided to be there, turn lanes, curb and gutter, there just isn't that much traffic there. And so I, maybe my perception of all this is not good, not, doesn't, it's my perception, right? But I'd like to know that if we're going to spend a half million dollars of our money, our taxpayers' money, that it's the right thing to do. Maybe we should only be spending a quarter million dollars in improvements there. I don't know the answer to that. So my feelings as I looked at this, because this was the one thing that really stood out for me, was I need to be able to tell the residents, this is, this is a good thing, and this is why, this is what we're getting for our dollar. And so I'd really like to be able to meet with the road commission and say, this plan was done a long time ago. Can you get us up to speed on where we're at? What is the plan, and why is it that? Because I think it was driven more by the road commission than the township, is I understand it. And so I'd like to see us meet, I'd like the board to say, yeah, let's have the manager or road liaison, maybe me, just go see where we're at, and make sure that we're where we're at, and is it a good thing? And to your point, too, I had the other thought, is if we keep doing this, it's, if we continue to do this, is it going to cost more? Because costs have gone up a whole lot in five years.
I have a point on that, too. As a consumer, that is the worst corner in this township. That is horrible, and it erodes all the time, it really needs to be upgraded, my God, it's horrible, and the traffic is horrible there.
Traffic? Okay, does it need upgrades? Sure, does it get water on it? Sure, I'll go, I'll go with you there, Connie, but I got to say, the remark.
This is Class A here.
Or Class A, the.
That is.
There's a couple different, I mean, there's an intersection, there's a lot of money being spent on the intersection. That is, I'd argue, distinct from the road itself. Is it wide enough even for the type of traffic? It's a single lane, I mean, the edges are breaking off because the trucks are, you know, too wide for the width of the road. You know, so they're always driving on the edge or into the shoulder. You have those large double tandem trucks that are going up and down it. You have large snow removal equipment that's even wider than some of these trucks that travel up and down that road, they're going to Western or wherever they're going. So there are a lot of different types of traffic on that road. And we're primarily talking about Lincoln and the intersection, and a little bit of Broomfield, both directions. What really needs work is the road and Broomfield.
Oh.
Yes.
Lincoln and Broomfield.
Great, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, you probably could live with four-way stops, you know, but.
Yeah.
I'm glad you brought that up, because that was one of my other questions, if we're going to, where, I don't see where we're spending a lot of money on roads, and if we were going to go with the road commission to work on something, I think we need to work on Broomfield Road.
Yeah.
And Mr. Casselli.
It's bad.
Yes.
Like Riverwood to.
Yeah, no, it's horrible.
To campus.
Yep. The city line.
And then Lincoln Road, like Mark said, that mile of Lincoln Road south.
And I think that if you have the road commission in here, another item you might want to bring up, and I think it's applicable to Lincoln, Broomfield, and then even Mission, when you start going north of the.
That are on that, that deals, helps deal with the trucks crushing the side of the road, because that's what's happening right now, is those wheels are hitting the side of the road, there's nothing there, but some gravel. That may protect the road from that kind of damage.
You don't need to call it a bike lane.
Right, I know, the county doesn't like calling them.
It's wide shoulder.
Three feet something on the right side of the white line.
Which we have on that bridge, and that was intentional, to have that so that people could cross that bridge safely.
Their wide shoulders and what they just did, that four miles from, well, you said, Tara, how wide Mission Road is now, I mean, I know from my mom's house, it's, you know.
I noticed that it's wider as well, and at this point, I can only assume, hope, that from the roundabout north, that would.
I'm sure it's going to be the same. Yeah, I'm sure it will.
But we don't have any money in it, we don't have any skin necessarily in the game.
Right.
But it's a question worth asking, maybe.
Yeah. So it sounds like we're in consensus that it'd be nice to have the road commission here, so that we can understand this better.
Do we need a motion for that?
I'll ask our manager if you're willing to act and.
I don't need a motion for that.
Perfect.
Although, I'll take that back, I think it might help in a, from a response perspective.
Yeah.
Sure.
All right, I would like to make a motion to have staff set up meeting with Isabella Road Commission. Doesn't have to be our next meeting, within the meeting staff's desire, to discuss Lincoln and Broomfield Road.
Second.
Project.
And just for clarity, that meeting, is that a board meeting?
Is that a board meeting, yes.
You want to say various, that and various projects, maybe there's like Mark's or.
And other various projects in the, in Union Township.
Do you feel you have enough to inform the county how to prepare?
I, I think I do, what, assuming this motion passes, I will send out to the board a list of the questions that I think you're wanting to have answered, and the intent would be to communicate that, you can add to it, whatever. And then I'll present that to the administrator of the road commission, and then give him some time. The, in terms of timing, there's two more board meetings after tonight. So they'll have to make sure they can meet that schedule. And where I'm going with this is, you will likely be faced with, do you approve the budget with this funding intact? While you're waiting for answers, or while you're waiting for answers, you might consider approving the budget without this funding. You can always put it back. This is about messaging.
I'd like to get it done.
Do we need more discussion on the motion to have, invite the road commission here to help answer some of these questions?
I already have seconded it, by the way.
Thank you. The motion by Brown, support by Bills, all in favor of the motion to invite the road commission here to answer some questions regarding the Lincoln project and some other items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign? Motion for invitation of the road commission passes unanimously. So let's continue, you were up, and I asked if I could jump in on the Lincoln, since you brought that up.
You know, in the future, I know there's been discussion of maybe paving Deerfield Road for that couple of miles to relieve pressure off of Broomfield. You know, like if people are going to games, you know, people that come in from the west side of the state and stuff, turn off of Whiteville, and, you know, then you're not running into all the kids crossing the street and everything, you're going to your, you know what I mean?
Right.
Pick Deerfield, where you go to the back of the stadium and stuff, you know, and release pressure off of Broomfield.
I think it gives us a lot of options, Bill.
Yeah.
You know, if we look at this and we do decide to pull funding, we will stick it somewhere else, so it gives us a lot of options to do.
That was kind of my thought process, I kept looking at the half million, going, we can do a lot. Now granted, I go back from costs in there for staff, and in particular for the new members on the board, I wanted to let you know, this is my favorite Union Township shirt, but you can see Mr. Nanny's got one.
Nice.
And it used to be policy that the board members were given a, I don't want to say stipend, it's not that. It was a budget of like $100 each to get clothing with the embroidery on it. And so this is from when I served previously, and I always really appreciated that. And I'm not suggesting that we necessarily have the township pay for that. But I wanted to bring up, because I see it in the budget, this is what brought this to my mind, is that it might be nice to make sure that there's permission for the board members to buy clothing if they want. Because it is nice to go to a county commission meeting and have your colors on, right? Show who you represent, nice to go to training, same thing. So one, I want to make you aware that that was a past policy, but two, when I was first a trustee, I couldn't get clothing. And then it became, you could get clothing, and I was always jealous that the staff had some, and I, as a trustee, as a planning commissioner, actually. But it'd be nice to, I think, have that.
Especially going to our meetings, we just.
Yeah. We just had this discussion this morning.
About getting name tags or something, so.
I demanded.
As I was going through the budget, is you'll know, I hope you don't mind me using you as an example. So our managers' salary and benefits, et cetera, are split through different funds, right? Some of it's in the general fund, and it says that, so I'm trying to remember what page that is.
It's right up there in the general, it's first.
Township.
Twelve pages.
So it's page three of thirteen, yeah.
Okay, so there it indicates that. Three thirteen. Okay, so there it indicates that, um. So what's nice is, it's highlighted that, hey, note that a third of this is the general fund, a third in the water fund, a third in the sewer fund. And, and that's nice to see, right? Um, but then there was a spot when I got, and I was looking at cost of BSNA software, and this is just an example, on five thirteen, there's, there's a big list here of items that make up the professional and contractual services. And so I thought, oh, well, that's how much we're paying then. We're paying seven thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars for BSNA, BSNA software support service fees. That's our annual cost. But then later in the budget, as I got to different funds, I see that we're paying for BSNA, same thing. Right? And what would be helpful to me, and, and not that I, I don't mean to pick on BSNA. I, I think it's a great tool. Um, I think our staff likes it. Um, it'd be nice to see a summary, uh, page that shows the total cost of some of these things that we incur, such as BSNA. What is the cost of BSNA for the township? Uh, and here's the three funds that are supporting. Mentioned to Mark when I met with him to go over the budget, I said it'd be helpful to have that summary, just so that I don't have to try to piece it all together. And I don't know if I can, uh, say what you said, because I don't want to get in trouble with staff. But, uh, response was, that doesn't seem too hard to be able to produce that kind of presentation. And I just thought it would be easier on us, as we're reviewing the budget, to have that kind of summary of where the splits are.
Same time.
Yeah. And it's clear to the public, too. Page twelve thirteen of the general. I know this was, this was budgeted previously. Uh, this is in the capital outlay, Township Hall, near the bottom of the page, electronic upgrade to the boardroom, um, seven thousand dollars. And so what I asked our manager here was, what's, what's the plan with that? What are the intended upgrades? And my only comment to this was, it'd be nice, especially after going to the, the county commission meeting, uh, at the county commission meeting, they had a screen up that was people that were zoomed in, then there was the place for the people that were attending in person, and the commissioners and staff. Um, and it might be nice to be able to have that technology. We've talked about this before, right? And so that's why I was asking our manager, what's the plan here? Would it include that type of capability? So if we had a consultant working for the planning commission, rather than making them travel three hours to get here, um, they could zoom in and, and work with the planning commission, or anybody else for that matter, right?
Do we pay mileage and hourly when we?
It's gotta be built into the cost, I'm assuming. Um, and I don't know how much effect that would have, but it would certainly make some activities, um, easier.
I think we should have Zoom meetings in every single meeting. It should be accessed. I, I, it's ridiculous we don't have access, in my opinion.
So my question wasn't about concern of the seven thousand dollars, but what was, what, why was it originally budgeted? Is it, is it, what's the intent of it? And I don't know if you want to try to answer that at all. I, I, I'm asking questions, or I'm telling you the questions I asked our manager.
Seven thousand for the BSNA or?
No, the, the electronic upgrade to the boardroom moved from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two on twelve thirteen for a general fund, page twelve fifteen.
Okay.
All right.
So I could either go through these as you go or after you're done? I got three things I need to respond to, right?
You do?
In this meeting.
Oh, my apologies. Why don't you catch up?
Okay.
Apologies.
Oh, I, I can do either way.
No, yeah, why don't you catch up?
As it relates to the discussion on clothing and name tags and that kind of thing, um, seems to me that, that all of you would want, and maybe you should have, a name tag like I have, and I have two of them. I keep one on my desk and one on my briefcase.
That's what I want.
And it is magnetic, and it has the, the logo and the name and the title, and, and if it, it hasn't occurred to me to offer those to you, but I can get seven of those in here in a couple of weeks, probably. And that's all we need to do with that. That doesn't, we don't need that.
If you do that, I have a name tag already, so excluding.
Okay. And we just need, does it say supervisor?
I don't know. It might say trustee. I'll check it out.
You want it to say supervisor.
I was gonna say, just.
That's big.
Just have them replace it.
Sorry.
And then the other part of that discussion was logo, uh, clothing. And I think you should have some logo clothing, in my opinion. Um, whether it's by past practice or, it's primarily by past practice, maybe policy, uh, there is a one hundred dollar, call it clothing benefit to all employees that they can, um, kind of do what they want with it. Um, many employees, like myself and the office folks, end up getting something like what you're wearing, only it promotes Union Township instead of Central Michigan. So you have the logo and, um, and I don't know that there's any reason why you all shouldn't be able to avail yourself to that, just like the other twenty-five employees. Uh, we wouldn't want a budget for that, just like we budget for in here. Um, if y'all don't want that, that's fine, too. Um, I would, and, and there's a, that, there is a process that we go through internally. We have a place where we order it from. We have the catalog. They have the logo. And so it's not just going to the, to Target and buying a pullover and then submitting a reimbursement request that, you know, one has to have, you know, our logo on it. Some of the field folks will go a little beyond that, maybe use it for a pair of decent podcasts to the community. We can't do that right now. And, and that's been out there for a while. We've made a couple improvements. We got some cameras back here. That was the first start of it. Um, and then with COVID, the other item that would be included, at least by my definition, would be the ability to have what I call a hybrid Zoom type of meeting. We're in here, some people are out in their easy chairs or an attorney or something, and they can interact with this body. And that's what I mean by enhancing the presentation aspect of this room.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm caught up with you.
Appreciate it. I'll try to be more, uh, aware of that. So anything else on the, on the clothing? I don't necessarily need money budgeted for me. I just want to make sure that people know they can buy it, and if you really wanted it, we could budget it. But I want to make sure that if you wanted it, you knew it was available to you, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind having the option to have a shirt, too, but I mean, I don't need it. I have to have, have to have a name tag.
So we're not asking our manager to change the budget?
No.
Right.
I would not.
That's, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
That's my feeling. I would not change the budget.
Me, too. I agree.
Well, I think.
I'll look at, I'll talk to Mark about a catalog and order something and pay for it myself, but not, not to, not a budget. That's my feeling.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I will, however the board decides, but I would definitely, if I start going to the city commission meetings, when we start going live person again, I would definitely represent in a shirt, Union Township shirt.
Yeah, I like that, too.
And then regarding the split liabilities, uh, summary page, um, I was, I was not, unless you all want it, I was not asking for that for this budget cycle. That was just a suggestion for future budget cycles.
We'll do it and then put it in the other information move forward, which is.
Okay.
We'll send it out to you.
I didn't want to create more work, was.
Not that much more work.
Okay. And I like the answer on the board presentation stuff?
I'm, I, I, I think we should spend whatever it is that needs to be spent to get this place up to code, to get some serious hybrid meetings going.
And then I only, I think I only have two other items. Um, my notes say general fund page seven. Let me catch up. Oh, and, and I think this will be clarified, but what we were just talking about, I looked at the, the, um, at the bottom, it says Township Hall and Grounds, that section. And I'm like, who's on the salary rolls for a thousand dollars a year into Township Hall and Grounds by an item? But that wasn't clear to me, and I think maybe the summary stuff might help with that.
Yeah, that was confusing.
Because this is actually a salary more than likely from Water and Sewer. Would you like to address this?
I'll say.
Sure. And that, I, I don't know to what extent the table would cover this, but what, what's going on here is, we have staff that are, they're one hundred percent budgeted in the Water and/or the Sewer Fund. And they'll occasionally be deployed to work in, say, do some work in this building. Couple of years ago, they were installing the defibrillators. They'll come in here and, and replace light bulbs. They'll do other things. And by right, their time should not be charged to the Water and Sewer Fund, because that's paid for by the ratepayers. So on their time cards, we have them mark their time for their, they worked over here for a couple of hours.
Aye.
And it gets charged to here. But that's what's going on there.
Yeah, that's very minimal, then, isn't it?
Yeah.
It is. And I, I was just, when I first saw it, I was trying to understand it, and then I deduced that it was something like this, but it wasn't clear.
Yeah.
To the point that, um, our manager just articulated, right?
In your table that I'm gonna get for you, there will be, like, you'll see my salary, you'll see yours. The, the bigger salaries that are spread across, those will get reported to you in that table. The other ones that are more ad hoc, uh, may not be, but.
And that's, that's fine for mine. All right, so, uh, the last thing that I had is general fund, page eleven, right? Oh, you know, I think I know about this, but it's more of a question. Right at the top of page eleven of thirteen, it's the Stormwater Management Ordinance Update Consultation, Consultant Services. I do seem to remember, after I had made this note, that we were wanting to do that this year, right? Update the stormwater management?
Yeah, and, and I think I mentioned that in my initial presentation. Uh, we're looking to update Stormwater Management Ordinance. Um, we felt it prudent to include some money in the budget for support work on that, to the extent we're not able to do it all in-house.
Great. And then, as you look at my notes, three quarters of my page was the Lincoln Road issue that you brought up. And we've already covered that, so, uh, Treasurer Clerk Rice, you're up.
I'm good. Mine, mine got talked about, so we're good.
Trustee Terry?
I do not have any questions at this point. Thank you.
Trustee Bills?
Okay, I have one, um, basis for, for the, uh, general fund, thirteen thirteen, last page here. Um, so under the capital outlay for alternative energy, my question is, why would we do an alternative energy feasibility study for the Township Hall if we aren't sure we're gonna keep the Township Hall? You know, if we're gonna do another twenty thousand to evaluate whether we're gonna build a new building?
Reasonable question.
Thank you.
Well, I had a thought, but I, my thought was that, oh, we're probably years from, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah. And not to be flippant, um, which I apologize for if I was. We, we're doing, you know, a couple of things right now. We're, we've begun a discussion on what to do with this building. Um, renovate it, tear it down, replace it, rebuild, what have you, locations, all that kind of thing. And, and we're starting those discussions. We are, have already started them. Um, we have some money, I believe, budgeted in here for that work, for twenty-two. And then in response to, uh, some discussion in our ends, we, we want to explore this alternative energy. Right now, we have not done any specs on that study. We do have, and this would be one of the items that you would see on this table that we're talking about, there is money spread across the organization, across the funds for alternative energy. And so yes, it's listed here in Township Hall. We'd probably, somewhere else, we'd see it listed in the Water Fund, the Sewer Fund, and we're talking about looking at Jameson, too. So I think it's, it's more just a descriptor at this point. You know, when we get out, get to the point of specking out, um, the scope of work that we'd want with this kind of study, we would need to ask and answer that question, I think, pretty, a lot more than we have in term, up to now, in terms of developing a budget.
Thank you. And on the, uh, I just had, it just seemed like a huge increase on this, um, page eight, uh, eight of thirteen on the general fund. Down at the bottom, it says, uh, Department three seventy-one building, salaries and wages going from basically, it's basically almost doubling. Well, at least, you know, a thirty percent increase from end of twenty twenty-one projected. I don't understand that. Is there something going on that's different?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
No, you'll do it better, but I think I know.
The, um.
It's Tara's, isn't it? Tara Sally. I knew it.
You okay, then?
God. I'm sorry.
In fiscal year twenty twenty-two, we will.
But they were paid for because they were special, is that why?
Well, one, this time last year, they were not planned for. So we know right now that there's gonna be three elections last year, or next year, in twenty twenty-two.
Oh, okay. But we knew there was gonna be two, the primary and the regular for the inter, the midterms?
This year?
Next year.
This year.
Oh, well, okay, well, I'm just saying for next year's budget. It's saying that.
In twenty twenty-two, we're certain to have three elections.
Yeah.
So we're budgeting at the front end more money than we budgeted for elections in twenty twenty-one.
Oh, I get it. Thank you.
When we were budgeting in twenty twenty-one, I believe we knew of, with certainty, one election. We ended up with three this year, in twenty twenty-one.
The nine one one was the one that we.
One, you know, there, there's been some, uh, reimbursements by.
Sure.
The county and the one election, and we're looking to build a school district for most of the costs of the.
Bond.
Bond election. But it's just having the, having more certain knowledge at the beginning of the year, we're able to, instead of amending the budget for these things, like we've been doing in twenty twenty-one, we'll have a more fulsome budget to start with.
Now, the, and the other question I have, manager, is the, um, cost allocation study for ten grand to ensure the general fund is receiving support from the other funds. Is that an accounting thing? Is it, we're paying an accountant to do that, or what's going on there? I don't, I don't know, I don't even understand what that is, so.
Right. So, and this speaks to a little bit about our earlier discussion about how we spread certain costs across certain funds. Um, we want to be very careful about what we charge. General fund, think of it as a central service operation. The expenses of this board, the expenses of the manager, the expenses of finance, if we had an HR department, those are all expenses that would be cost-centered in the general fund. But they're providing service to a number of other funds, Water Fund, Sewer Fund, Fire Fund, EDA, and we are allowed to charge those other funds for the services that they're receiving from the general fund. The cost allocation study is to bring in a professional that will go through that exercise in a way that then we can comfortably rely on it when we do start charging these other funds, because the other funds aren't gonna be happy about it, right?
Yeah.
And rather than just say, here's what we thought it felt like, like one-third, one-third, one-third.
Yeah.
You know, which is better, way better than nothing.
Yeah.
We're gonna ha- ha- have a study done so that we can
Be precise.
Be a little bit more accurate, and we can, it's easier to defend if we get the question. And the question often comes up from the Water and the Sewer type of funds, because the ratepayers are gonna pay for that charge that the General Fund is gonna charge, and so we need to be able to substantiate it.
I just had one more tiny question.
You have the floor.
It's kind of basi, kind of the same thing, uh, Trustee Houck was saying about the roads costing more, and this gravel road, I'm pretty sure Mr. Casselli said that road, gravel road improvement is gonna be 38,000 a mile, so, because of the gravel shortage or something, instead of 30? So I just, we can make an amendment at that time, whenever we get that done, I guess, whatever.
Well, we did obtain some information, I think, of some, the costs are going up.
Yeah.
And I believe we have some information from the Road Commission in terms of an estimate of those increased costs. And we factored that in with the assumption of four miles of gravel road, it, these estimated higher costs that we've obtained in the last couple of months from the Road Commission, that they think they're gonna be paying for next year.
Awesome.
So I would think it's a pretty good budget for that, um, item.
And then I just wanna make one comment too, and that is that, thank you for putting 40,000 in funding for the grant programs, uh, for the beautification and pedestrian access improvements. That's it, I guess.
Yeah, a big smile on that last one. Thank you, Trustee Bills. Trustee Brown?
Yes, most of my questions were answered, I do have one other one I'd like to, um, just ask about, um, the funding, so it'd be page one in general, uh, funding in the amount of 38,000 budgeted for complete, the safety and security aspect of the property of 5243 Jonathan Lane. I'm just wondering, 38,000, what, what's, what's that mean for the security and, uh, safety? What, what do we have to do, I guess, on that property?
Thank you for asking that.
Mark?
I think the best answer would come from Mr. Nanny.
Okay.
This, this is the property purchased, uh, the lot in the country's various divisions. The whole nose of the property has been removed, and we have a foundation, uh, you know, some foundation block is still there that we need to take out. The, uh, the bulk of the, the funds, uh, were, uh, once that demolition's done, that foundation and the privacy funds that needs to come down, was to install a sidewalk, uh, that would run between Third Street, K Street, and Jonathan Lane.
Oh, that's what, some of that 38,000 for? Oh, okay.
That's part of that safety.
Oh, safety, yeah, okay. And the security is offense, I take it, then?
Uh, yeah, there would be offense, uh, yes, and we have open to the sidewalk, we just make sure people don't drive through that space.
Perfect, if it's for sidewalks, I will clap 100% on that. And then the other one was just the Lincoln Road, that was my, my, my bit, that was probably the largest, uh, it, uh, question that I had, Lincoln and Bluefield Road project, so. That's, that's all I have.
Uh, Trustee Brown, can I follow? Yeah, go to your first page right there. You go down to both the metal. No, I, I, I never did. Okay. But it's in, it's coming out of the general. So, um, I've, I've gone and looked at that property since the, the house came down, um, and I'm, I hope I don't step out of line here. But that neighborhood now is part of the East DDA. And as I've looked at that property, that's gonna give great pedestrian access for that neighborhood to Pickard.
Yeah.
And I wonder how much of that, um, is maybe a joint project with the East DDA?
I'd love to.
And I didn't know if that had been thought about as far as funding, or...
Well, was this, was this budget with the other, the, the heat districts were not yet redone?
I know. Yes, I, I understand that fully, um, but that's where my mind went when I saw it, and that, and like I said, I didn't wanna step out of line here, because I realized that that would've been putting the cart before the horse if that had been budgeted completely that way. But I didn't know if there was internal discussions that that might be a reasonable way to approach this particular project. And I'll leave, I'll leave it at that, unless, okay.
I have one more, one more thing if I can.
Your time's up.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
Well, I was really excited when I saw that the, uh, money that's being allocated for the lead fight.
For what?
Lead, where the heck was it? Gosh, it's right here somewhere. $35,000.
For the what now?
Says lead, lead, right? Um, where is it?
Lead, lead service line, remediation.
Yeah, lead service line and lead components in the fire hydrants?
Yes, so, system-wide, we're doing a lot of work to identify where lead exists within the water system, and, uh, taking inventories, reporting, remediation, and part of, apparently the fire hydrants contain certain components that are made of lead, and so that gets to swapping those out, those parts.
Thank you. My question is, how much do we know? How much do we know about a lot more that would cost a lot more money? And, because I just heard on TV today that, you know, the judge awarded Flint a whole heck of a lot of money for the state having not done their due diligence in Flint. I'm wondering how much we have that we know about, that we could possibly be funding now?
Well, we have money in here for remediation of those service lines that we find through the inventory process.
So this is all we know about, basically?
And we're not complete, what's the name of the firm that's helping us?
Hydrocar, as part of that program, they're doing the internal inspections on the homes, identifying any. At this time, we've only found one, but we're, you know, it's new, so we're still working on that, and that one's already been replaced.
How many have they looked at so far?
Uh, I don't have that number right off the top, only head Jeff. We just started those inspections this year. We had quite a bit of information about commercial. You have to remember, Union Township's water system is fairly new, and, you know, if you look at a system like Flint or Bankard, where those systems are very old.
Oh, yeah.
We expect to find more of those in existing homes that disconnected from a well
Yeah.
and use the same service line that they had for their old well to go into the home.
Yeah.
And then the township is responsible for 18 inches into the home, and
Oh.
So that's all part of the investigation that we're doing, but, um, overall, you know, we don't know the exact number, but as we find them, we need to have money in our budget to make those replacements.
Oh, that's great.
As, as long as we have a little extra slush in that, that, that's what I was kinda trying to make sure of, you know?
Yes.
If we start finding more, then we'll adjust that number, and we'll make sure that you're aware of that.
Thank you.
And then we also do have the components of the fire hydrants that need to be replaced out, and mainly has to do with how those, uh, hydrants were cast when they were built, so the heads have to be replaced, and we've done, we did some of those this year, and we'll continue to do those.
Nice.
More?
No, I, I...
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
I, I have, uh, questions related, um, uh, I guess it's one question, two parts. I'm assuming, and maybe I missed it if it's there, I didn't see anything regarding ARPA funds, but that's because we haven't figured all that out yet, is that?
Right, there, there is no money, revenue, or expense in this budget for the ARPA funds.
Right, I, I knew we hadn't talked about where it might go, but I, I looked briefly for the income on that, and it's not, not in that.
Accounting rules that, that, uh, as it turns out, um, we did yesterday, and I was gonna report this in the manager comments, uh, we did receive into our bank account the first payment of those ARPA funds yesterday, $727,000, I think, something like that.
Wow.
So those have come into our account, and even though they're in our account, and Sherry, you could speak to this better than me, um, we're not able to record them as revenue yet due to some accounting rules.
I kinda figured, but I just, at this point, it's not, I wanna make sure everybody understood it's not part of the equation yet.
Right, oh, no, I had...
Do you invest that money?
It's earning interest.
Yeah.
It will, yeah.
Would that be something that would come under like a completely different, if, if we had it, would we have an ARPA file, you know what I mean? So we look at that, because we wanna look at that a little bit differently than, even though it may go to certain funds for the right cause and purpose.
The answer, y- yes.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna be needing to track that. There, there's budgetary tracking and all that, and then even more important than that for these ARPA funds is the periodic reporting that we have to do to the US Treasury. So we're, we're gonna need to have separate internally files and really keep track of this money.
Did you have something, Trustee Al?
Oh, I was just gonna say, but, thank you for sending that email out that said, well, we can use those funds for...
So there'll be much more to come on that.
Okay.
But this budget does not contain expense or revenue.
And that's what I thought, I just kinda wanted to clarify and make sure we understood that, and that I understood it properly too, based on what I was looking at. And related to that, then, um, the infrastructure bill the federal government recently passed, we potentially could see some injection here. Will it come at this level? Do we know anything?
I don't, I mean, I think the short answer is yes. It'll trickle down to the local level somehow.
Water Department.
Yeah, infrastructure.
Water, yeah. I'm excited, that's, that's good news. I can't wait to start the meetings on our ARPA funds.
I, I just wanna make sure you, that we all collectively manage our expectations on that, in this whole arena. There is a, a, just a ton of money sloshing through the system right now. Federal, through the states, local, and that is good. But you'd have trouble spending that money real quick right now, because there aren't any workers, there's no cement, there's no chips, there's no nothing. So there, it, it's gonna come to a head somehow, and I don't know how yet, uh, but, if there are no workers to lay pavement.
Yeah.
And we can't do much about that, and this is just a hypothetical, you know? And then the money's not spent, and then you have to return it, you know? It, it's just kind of a mess right now. You, you got high inflation coming up because of all this money. It's gonna put pressure on wages, it's gonna put, you know, you can't even find workers right now, and people are paying more and more, so. It, it's, it's good that, that the federal government is, you know, providing this funding, but it's just not gonna be as easy to spend a million dollars in 2022 as it would've been in 2018.
You got that right.
And they're giving us till 2026, or 24?
Yeah, we have to figure it out by 2024, right? And then spend it by 2026.
Commit it by 2024, let contracts, you know, a, a formal commitment, and that has a definition to it, and then the actual money spent by 2026, the end of 2026.
I think that's a huge benefit to us, as we see, notice things starting to happen where the money could go.
Somebody's gonna have to pay it back.
And then, you never know, we may find that Mount Pla, the city of Mount Pleasant has something that we have common ground on that we can work together. May, and maybe not, but I mean, you know, I would just hate to do something right off the bat and then go, oh, darn, you know, we could've...
It's good for us to hear that. So with that, we'll move on, unless there's objection. That takes us to item 12 on our agenda, Extended Public Comment. Extended Public Comment is restricted to five minutes, any item. Go ahead and talk about whatever. But if you do approach the board or the public to speak, please state your name and address for the record, and with that, we will open up Extended Public Comment at 8:24 PM.
I wanna make a cricket sound.
I just want the public to start coming to our meetings.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's an open invitation to, to people out there, come on to us.
Seeing no one come forward, no board members, no public, no staff, uh, crickets, as you put it. We will close Extended Public Comment at 8:24 PM. That moves us to item 13, Manager's Comments. You have the floor.
I have nothing, thank you.
You did what you did, trust me. Final board member comment, um, Trustee Brown?
I would like to thank Mark and the staff for an excellent job in the presentation of the book and the materials put together so we can actually do this, and, uh, and go through this and keep our comments to, to a minimum. Uh, I, I think they did an outstanding job. Thank you. That's it.
You're here.
I'd like to echo that. Awesome book, and I just love, loved the presentation of it, that was awesome. In addition, we're going to the Caribbean next week, so I'll let you know how it is.
So ours gotta rub it in.
Ready to find work.
Okay.
Trustee Terry?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm good.
Uh, real, real quick, um, I'll echo the comments, you know, I look back at the budget process years ago, um, and the tool for us as a board member has definitely improved over time, and that is reflected in your comments, and the kudos to, to the staff. But also, it, it isn't just the budget process, it is the entire meeting process and preparing the various boards to do their work. I think all of that's improved, um, over time, and so kudos and thank you on that as well. Trustee Al?
Okay. Next Wednesday night, the Council of Governments meeting will be here, and Peter is gonna speak on blight issues.
Gellinay?
Other townships, yes.
Who, I'm sorry, who?
Peter Gellinay.
Gellinay.
Oh, okay.
He's gonna speak on blight issues, then maybe we can help some other townships out with their issues, because, like I told Rodney today, over the last couple of years, we've significantly, significantly reduced the amount of blight in this township. I mean, I really think we have, so. And the only other thing I have is I was pulling in here, um, I'm glad to see one of our former board members, Roger Houck, is running for the new state senate seat.
Awesome.
So I just saw that when I pulled in, I got a text, and I haven't texted him back, but kinda cool that a little union township trustee is gonna run for the state senate, so, anyways.
And even better when he's family, right?
What's that?
And even better when he's family, right?
Wow.
If I could follow up just on the blight issue briefly, um, if you saw the, the, I guess for lack of a better term, the survey that we did for residents, uh, twice over a five-year period, number one issue was blight.
Yeah.
And that was, it was, it surprised me how much of an issue that was for our residents. And I think that speaks to the previous board that took that on and, and made that a priority, and the staff that made that happen.
I talked to Rick Irvin today, and I brought this up here before, I brought it up to Jim Horton, too. If we could get some kind of a compactor, you know, if they had it at the recycling center, if you, you know, if it cost you five bucks to throw a recliner in it, I'm sure people would pay you the five bucks to throw the recliner in it.
sure people would pay you the five bucks to throw the recliner in it, you know? Well, instead of seeing them along the sides of the road and stuff, it'd be a lot better. You know, I mean, when we have our cleanup day, it's unbelievable how much stuff goes in one of those garbage trucks. I mean...
Yeah.
I just, you know, I think that that would be good for the county. Maybe Union Township right out here, we could, you know, another job for Tara. That's a county downward coach, you know? Thank you.
All right. Uh, with that, yes?
Just because it's germane to what we've been talking about, um, the property on Bill Braille, uh, wood, empty wood. We should have, uh, we, we've been working on the, uh, scope of service to put that cleanup out for bid, and we hope in the next, uh, five to ten days that that will be out on the streets. You may recall, um, of, I'm really anxious to see what kind of bids we'll get back, because it's a big job. And so, it'll be an opportunity to really clean up a, an eyesore, but it's not going to be cheap. So we'll...
I don't know, where is that?
More to come, but...
Very end of, sorry.
The, the old pool, the, the old swimming...
Crawford, uh, Crawford Road. Oh, Chipwater. Yeah. Oh, Chipwater. Chipwater's Park.
There was a pool there?
Yeah.
Way back to, nice, very nice homes, you know, that weren't there when the pool was there, but...
How old are you, Ben? The only pool I know about is the Island Park one.
Does it beat you?
Holy cow!
I had a class reunion there thirty years ago. So...
Chip, we always called it Chipwater.
Yeah, Chipwater.
Yeah, we always called it, you know, when I went there.
It's at least, I mean, it's pretty old, though. Oh, it's got to be at least thirty-five years old, because I had a thirty-year class reunion.
We've been working on that for several years.
Yeah.
And, uh, we have court authorization to keep moving. The next step will be, it, for your consideration, to award a bid, I don't know how much yet, but it could be fifty K.
Sizable. Neighbors will be happy with that.
Oh, the neighbors' next up division would just be ecstatic, I would have to think.
You know, we have to clean up the blight, I agree with trustee Houck, it's extremely important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it is, uh, eight thirty, uh, kickoff for Central was at eight, I've not seen a score yet, but fire up chips.
Fire up.
Pete Kent State tonight.
Yeah.
And with that, I'm happy to entertain any motions for adjournment.
I will make a motion to close the meeting.
Say it.
Uh, motion to adjourn by Brown, support by Bills, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? German?